Good evening, everyone. Today's January 6, 2021. We have our public hearing on needs, performance, and request for funding. Tonight's public hearing is being held to provide residents of Fall River and all interested parties the opportunity which they have used on the following housing and community development needs, the needs of the homeless, the development of the proposed activities, including activities related to community housing development organizations, and various program performance in the city of Fall River. The City of Fall River Consolidated Plan was developed in the year 2020 that document identified community development, housing, and homeless needs, and a schedule of strategies to address them over a five-year period, a timeframe that will come to a conclusion on June 30, 2025. We have embarked on the development of the Year Two Annual Action Plan that will present a series of strategies addressing the needs identified through public hearings, written testimony petitions, and formal requests for funding. The Year Two Annual Action Plan of the Proposed Five-Year Consolidated Plan will represent a schedule of activities and projects to be undertaken during the second year of the five-year cycle that are designed to meet and address community needs in conformance with the established five-year strategies. Testimonies, statements, letters, requests for funding, and petitions submitted at tonight's hearing will be used in the development of that annual action plan for the program year commencing July 1, 2021. Completed requests for funding must be submitted to the Fall River Community Development Agency no later than January 27, 2021. Copies of the requests for funding forms are available at the office of the Fall River Community Development Agency, and they're also on the city's website at www.fallriverma.org. You also could reach out to either Erica or myself, and we can email it to you if you need. Summary of the Proposed Annual Action Plan is to be published on February 26, 2021 in the Herald News and the OJ Now. It will also be made available for public review at the offices of the Fall River Community Development Agency. Another public hearing has been scheduled for March 10, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. here on Zoom, or if allowed, in the city council chambers, to afford residents the opportunity to review and comment on the proposed plan. Residents will have until March 29, 2021, to submit additional comments. All statements received during this review period will be considered in the development of the City of Fall River's Year Two Annual Action Plan. According to the submission timetable, copies of the plan and pertinent informational materials will be submitted to the city council sometime in April. The city council will consider an enactment of a resolution authorizing Mayor Paul Coogan to file the Year Two Annual Action Plan with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development on or about May 15, 2021. Year 47 of the Fall River Community Development Block Grant Program, Year 30 of the Home Program, and Year 35 of the Emergency Solutions Grant Program are scheduled to begin on July 1, 2021. The City of Fall River anticipates receiving approximately $2.9 million for eligible CDBG program activities, $1,010,000 for home program activities, and approximately $250,000 for ESG program activities. This estimation assumes that the city will be level-funded for the up-and-coming program year. Federal regulations require that citizens be provided information concerning the amounts of funds that will be available and the range of activities that may be undertaken. This and additional information was furnished in display advertisements in the following locations: the Fall River Herald News, and the OJ Now, cable TV, and the Fall River Municipal Website. The format of this public hearing will be to allow participants the opportunity to express their views of the city's housing and community development needs, the needs of the homeless, and/or program performances, and to submit requests for funding, prepared statements will be accepted. I ask each of you who are here to speak, you will be called to testify, and each speaker should state his or her name, an address, and if appropriate, the agency or organization they represent. Before we begin tonight with the testimony, I'd like to acknowledge the following statements that have been received by the Community Development Agency already. We have comments from People Incorporated for the Community Education Center and their preschool program, and we also have comments from the Fall River Community Housing Resource Board, and our Fall River Health Department Executive Director, Director of Health Tess Curran. So to start the public hearing off this evening, the first speaker that I have on my list is Mr. Ken Fiola, who's representing Bristol County Economic Development Consultants. Ken, if you're there, if you could unmute yourself, then please give us your testimony.
Thank you. Hopefully you can see me, but if you can't see me, you can hear me. So I'd like to appreciate the opportunity to once again appear before CDA and participate in this public hearing. On behalf of the Board of Directors and Jobs of Fall River, I do business as the Bristol County Economic Development Consultants. This office will be seeking FY '22 Community Development Block Grant Funding for the delivery of economic development activities designated to benefit low- and moderate-income people in distressed census tracts throughout the city. As you know, with the exception of FY '18 and FY '19, Jobs has successfully and productively administered CDBG funds for economic development purposes from our inception in 1978 through fiscal year '17. During this timeframe, Jobs had invested CDBG, EDA, and CDF5 funds in distressed census tracts, and in projects that have created and retained more than 15,200 quantifiable jobs for low- and moderate-income eligible individuals. Throughout this timeframe, Jobs has also been able to provide more than $76 million in low-interest financing to 684 businesses from CDBG and other loan and grant programs, which has helped to leverage more than $297 million in private sector investment within our community. From July 1, 2017 through May 31, 2020, Jobs has issued another $3,338,000 in low-interest loans to 17 businesses that help to create and retain more than 250 job opportunities for low- and moderate-income people. As of June 1, 2020, Jobs has been able to secure $2,873,000 in additional loan funds, and has loaned down more than $1.675 million to 15 businesses during this timeframe. This lengthy activity to date has resulted in the creation of 50 new jobs, retention of 30 jobs, in which 51% of the new jobs or retained jobs have been occupied or made available to low- and moderate-income people. In addition to creating jobs for low- and moderate-income people and helping revitalize areas of distress, our economic development efforts have had a significant impact on the local economy through the generation of local real estate and excise taxes. In fact, more than $3.5 million annually in property tax excise taxes, floorboard fees, are collected by the City of Fall River for projects within our economic development portfolio. As we move forward funding for next year, Job intends to continue its economic development program in FY '22. Job proposes to continue the operation of our previously approved economic development objectives, including the administration of a revolving low-interest loan designed to create and retain jobs for low- and moderate-income people in high-profile census tracts throughout the city. As such, in order to continue to help retain jobs for the low- and moderate-income people and help revitalize distressed census tracts, Job will be submitting under separate cover a full FY '22 RFF application to your office no later than January 27, 2021. Again, thank you for your consideration of this request. We will be submitting that application forthwith and look forward to the possibility of continuing a productive and positive working relationship with the Community Development Agency and the City of Fall River. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Have a good night.
You too.
Is Grace Girl in there? Grace?
Right here, thank you.
Awesome.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. I prepared a letter to you, Mr. Dion. Greater Fall River Recreation is respectfully requesting continued funding from CDA's Community Development Block Grant Funds for upcoming fiscal year 47/7. Our agency is grateful for the support that we have received from CDA, which has allowed us to provide affordable programs and free events to the city of Fall River for 46 years. With the overwhelming significance of COVID-19, this funding is more important now more than ever to us. The epidemic has had a devastating impact in all areas of our city. Our Fall River community depends on recreations for safety, security, and assistance to help cope with the issues that have been brought up over the last year. As a result, COVID-19 enabled us to create more virtual-based programming and events through social distancing using innovative means to provide for our community. This includes events such as our virtual kickoff to summer, drive-in movies, and much more. Recreation is fully prepared and committed to adjust to these challenging times, providing more socially-distanced programs and events to support our Fall River community as all navigate our way out of quarantine. We continue building relationships with new partners, as well as maintaining our existing relationships that we have had over, for many years, with various city organizations and departments. Our Community and Wellness Center maintains strong partnerships with the Family Services Association and Youth Build Fall River. Without the cooperative relationship of these organizations, we could not easily refer families that our agency is ready and prepared to serve. Working mutually with both FSA and Youth Build allows Greater Fall River Recreation to craft a broad safety net with the many families in need of our assistance. Recreation continues on making improvements to its facility, in particular, our new gymnasium. In part of this significant development, we will be bringing back all our programs in-house and adding new services to the center this year. Our facility has been able to offer youth and their families onsite social services that provide wraparound support necessary for families to thrive and overcome challenging life circumstances, especially during the crisis of COVID-19. Therefore, it is critical we continue to receive funding to honor our mission to serve the community of Fall River. Recreation has provided 100 direct service programs, as well as 30 special events annually. Over the past decades, the demographics on our service area have changed, and Recreation has remained committed to providing opportunities, such as our HISA Education Program, Greater Fall River Fitness Challenge, our Sailing Program, and the USDA's Summer Lunch Program. These programs continue to have a positive impact in our community. This past summer, our agency provided over 70,000 grab-and-go meals to youth ages 18 years and younger. This large number was an indication to us of the enormous need for this program. Also, Recreation's outreach program serviced over 130 at-risk youth in the past year and provided services such as employment, education, behavioral health, and pro-social activities, which included gym memberships and peer support groups, to name a few. We continue to recognize the great demand for affordable programming. CDBG funding has ensured that citizens of all backgrounds and income levels have access to recreational, cultural, educational, and wellness opportunities. Of the 1,345 participants we served in the past fiscal year, approximately 84% meet housing urban development's income guidelines for low-income families. Thanks to CDBG funding, we are also able to provide scholarships and discounts to HUD eligible families, giving them the opportunity to participate in programs they may otherwise not be able to afford. On behalf of the Board of Directors and the served families of Recreation, we are eager to continue providing the most inclusive and culturally competent center for individuals of all ages in our community. I would like to once again thank the Community Development Agency, under Mr. Dion's leadership, for continuing to recognize the important role our agency plays in the well-being of Fall River residents. I respectfully request a continuation of funding for ongoing support of Greater Fall River Recreation programs. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you, Grace. You too. Okay, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Next is Stephanie Mancini from the YMCA.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Stephanie Mancini from the Fall River YMCA, 199 North Main Street. I want to thank you again for this opportunity, and certainly thank you for the CDA for past funding to the YMCA. We are definitely grateful for that. I do have some prepared comments that I will read. In 2019, the Fall River Y Education Achievement Center, which we call the EAC, provided after-school enrichment programming to an average of 150 students throughout the school year and 75 to 100 during the summer learning program formerly known as Power Scholars Academy. Summer enrollment has been dependent on funding, servicing approximately 300 students over the prior three years. In addition, all children enrolled receive a free YMCA family membership to the Y, equivalent to $800 annually. Membership includes a variety of traditional programming, including aquatics, health and wellness, youth sports, and more. This year, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, we have transformed our traditional after-school program into a remote learning site, currently servicing 70 children. The goal is to provide not only a structured and safe environment for our youth to excel in the virtual programming, but also to provide options for families that do not have the ability to homeschool. We continue to adapt to the needs of the students as they all have a different schedule. Starting this summer and throughout the school year, we plan on offering EAC programming at the Y to help support the lost learning that may have happened during the school year and throughout the pandemic. The hybrid model of academic and enrichment programming has proven successful over the years and continues to evolve to meet the needs of our youth. Youth are automatically enrolled into the EAC when registered for our childcare and summer camp programming. However, we intend on opening the program beyond this criteria based on availability. The youth we serve are identified through a combination of YMCA South Coast Outreach and Fall River Public Schools referrals. Funds from this grant help to cover staff salaries, program supplies, and enrichment activities such as STEM, STEAM, music, and arts. We are respectfully requesting funding to support the Fall River YMCA's Educational Achievement Center, EAC, programming created to address the academic disparities among underprivileged students and their peers. Additionally, for the past 10 months, in response to the pandemic, the Fall River YMCA has been providing urgent needs to our community: childcare for essential workers, nutrition for the food insecure, and facilities for the homeless, which have become a priority for our community engagement. We've been fortunate to be in a position to provide these services to our community during this crisis. Thank you for consideration for this request.
Awesome. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Next to speak, I have Pamela McLeod Lima from the New Bedford Women's Center, which is Our Sister's Place in the city of Fall River.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Pam.
Great. I apologize for being a disembodied voice, but I don't have a working webcam right now.
No problem.
So as Mike just said, I'm Pamela McLeod Lima. I live at 488 Hood Street in Fall River. My organization, the umbrella organization, is the Women's Center, but the program I'm here to speak about tonight is Our Sister's Place, which has been part of this community for over 25 years now. And I just want to say that Our Sister's Place Domestic Violence Shelter is the first step for families who have suffered domestic violence towards a future free from that violence. We help them to establish real independence, assisting them to access training and employment, and to find permanent housing. Let me emphasize again, though, that these families are not just homeless. They are homeless due to domestic violence, but they're also at risk of great harm, even possibly death at the hands of their abusers. When local victims seek help from violence, they find safety in Our Sister's Place. The funding from the Emergency Solutions Grant that supports the shelter, at the very least, prevents individuals, mostly women and children, from becoming homeless due to domestic violence, but more importantly, it saves lives. We know that. No age group, no race, no gender, or type of intimate relationship is immune to domestic violence. As I said, we mostly serve women and children, but we have hosted men at the shelter who have been victims. We have also hosted many members from the LGBT community, and especially the trans community. So we know that victims can be anyone from anywhere, and we serve anyone who is a victim. Now, most of us feel safe in our own homes. We expect to. Home is sanctuary, but it is not that for victims of domestic violence. Imagine that. Understand that for them, home is where the danger is. Last year, there were 22 probable domestic violence homicides in Massachusetts, and no two crimes of domestic violence are identical, but the horror of each one ought to teach the same lesson, that everything possible must be done to foresee and prevent these terrible events. We know that this pandemic has made it even more dangerous for these victims. It has been proven, and statistics show that in times of community crisis, including floods, hurricanes, and yet epidemics, we know that domestic violence flourishes in those environments. Isolation itself is often a frequent tool of abusers. Now, with COVID-19, victims are afraid to go out and afraid to stay in. We make sure that victims know that they can get help, though, even now. The Women's Center in Our Sister's Place is right here, and we have still been open and operating throughout the pandemic. The ESG funding is a vital piece of the patchwork quilt, or the tapestry, as we call it, of state, local, and federal funds that are critical to meet the cost of staying open and housing these victims who are at grave risk. Our Sister's Place Shelter prevents homelessness of these families, but more importantly, as I said before, it saves lives. In Our Sister's Place, victims find safety and a new beginning, where they too can experience home as sanctuary, as safety. We have been fortunate over the years that our local continuum of care has understood the critical need for this safe haven for victims, and we appreciate and acknowledge a great partnership with our local CDA office. They too have been there throughout this pandemic. The Women's Center will be requesting funding again this year to continue these critical services for homeless families at risk of violence. Thank you very much for this opportunity, and we will be, of course, submitting an application before January 27.
Pam, thank you so much, and if you could, I don't know if that was a written statement, for us to be able to do the minutes, if you could email that to me in the morning, that would be great if you could do that.
Yeah, I will absolutely. You know, some of it, as you know, with me is off the top of my head, and just a few notes are written down, but I will try to make it make sense on paper, and I will send it off to you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is Rosa Maderas from Steppingstone.
Happy New Year. And today, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come in and also speak on behalf of our program, our emergency shelter, The First Step In, and we are requesting level funding for the fiscal year coming up from 7/1, 2021, through June of 2022. Steppingstone as an organization has been working in the Fall River area for over 50 years. We have started to serve the homeless population since 1996 with housing, and in 2003, we started to operate the homeless shelter. That's always been my favorite part to say, and that's because I've been the director of that shelter since then, and it's come such a long way, and I'm very proud of it. Our commitment hasn't faltered. It's still very strong, but we've changed quite an awful lot. We've gone from a very small facility to a larger facility, a facility that can open up to 50 beds in the winter, and we work very closely with CDA and all of the homeless service providers and the task force, the mayor's task force, to be able to, every year, improve on our emergency shelter response system here in Fall River. And this year, COVID really challenged us, but it also made us shine, and we now have a permanent winter overflow shelter. We have, you know, the opportunity with COVID and to be able to have other alternatives. It's been really difficult to figure out how to maintain safety and still be able to keep the capacity in place so that we could respond for the winter, and we have because of the community effort. I am just so proud of that, proud of the dedication of everyone at CDA and at City Hall, and of all the people that have been involved for a long time with the winter overflow. But our shelter is really the nucleus of it all, and I'm very proud of that. We know who all the homeless are. We take them in, non-judgmenting. We don't use judgment, and we take them in, and our goal is to really house every single one of them, change their lives around to the point where they're no longer coming to us the next winter, and we've started this really aggressive approach to be able to house them. House as many as we can so that we can maybe end the cycle of homelessness, and it's actually worked. We've been able to get some additional funding through Cspec Services and working together with a lot of the housing community leaders in our community, the Housing Authority, all the other CSS providing supportive housing, our supportive housing programs, landlords in the community. Fall River is enriched with a lot of wonderful businesses and people who are willing to make a difference. This past year, we've been really tracking the individuals that get housed, and in the last fiscal year... So when I refer to overflow, I'm going to refer in figures that I'm going to share with you. It's referring to any bed over the 20 that we have. So we have our 20 beds, and then we have an additional overflow situation that we can go up to 50 in the winter, and we also have winter overflow that goes into Tomato House with Sullivan's porch. Last year, we were reporting on all of the overflow. So these numbers that I'm going to share are numbers from the shelters, 20 beds, the overflow beds, and also the individuals that went into the winter overflow at Tomato's house. Last year, and the figures are from July 2019 to June 2020, 129 unduplicated individuals entered into the overflow beds, so that's anything over the 20, 126 left. And when I gathered these numbers, we still had, it was after June, and we still had three people in there in the overflow at the First Step In Shelter because of COVID. We tried to keep people safe. Of the 20, of the 126 who left just overflow beds, 79 left and did not return. They do that sometimes. 21 went into the shelter and got permanent beds, 20 went into permanent housing, one into transitional housing with family, one ended up in a psych hospital, one back on the streets. I'm proud of that. It's just one. And two went in to get substance abuse treatment. So that's not that bad when you consider those individuals were in overflow situation and didn't really spend much time with us. Now, of the 20 beds that are funded by this ESG funding that's so important to us, 82 entered in that fiscal year, 61 left, and of the 61 who left, 24 went into permanent housing, five went into transitional housing, one got a BASH subsidy for housing for vets, which is also permanent housing, one went into shelter in another location because he wasn't from our area, and 30 exited because they did not return to shelter, and that happens a lot. People just don't come back to their bed. So if you think that 61, of the 61 who left, 24 plus 5 plus 1 is 30. That's 50% people getting placed into housing, and that's the point I'm trying to make today. I'm just trying to make today the point that our shelter is in the business of housing people and trying to change their lives. And I am so grateful to work in the city of Fall River. I have been doing so since 1996, and I have a lot of heart that belongs in the city of Fall River, and I just want to thank you for the opportunity to do this work and continue, the opportunity to continue. um, the opportunity for the, for the opportunity to continue to do this. Thank you.
Rosa, thank you so much. And you, you and Steppingstone do a great job, so I really appreciate it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, next up is Rui Rosa, representing Catholic Social Services.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. Um, so I'm Rui Rosa. I'm the CFO for Catholic Social Services, and our address is sixteen hundred Bay Street in Fall River. Um, so CSS has been the subrecipient of HUD's Emergency Solutions Grant Funds through the Fall River CDA in the past. Um, we believe that we have developed a very good relationship with the FR CDA um, and continue to rely on their expertise and guidance to ensure the proper execution of this contract. So we are submitting this request for ESG funding for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. Um, as an entitlement city, we believe that Fall River aims to develop a viable urban community by providing decent housing and by expanding economic opportunities, principally for its low and moderate, moderate-income residents. So ESG funds are specifically targeted for households living below the thirty percent AMI level. Uh, and obviously, under typical circumstances, these are the households that often find themselves in fiscally fragile situations and ultimately are the most vulnerable to being on the brink of homelessness. In light of this year's um, COVID-19 pandemic, um, I think it has shown that the funding has become more significant than ever. Uh, so as the economy fails to gain strength, uh, to support the working class and those on the lower-income bracket, um, we anticipate that the prolonged nature of this unique event uh, will only exacerbate the disparate impact that the pandemic has had on the city's low and moderate-income residents. How we're seeing it is that by the number of households that are facing eviction um, as a result of the reasons mentioned previously. Um, as an example of how this is manifesting in data, uh, so since the start of the fiscal year, so July of two thousand twenty, um, we have received an average of twenty-seven calls per day um, from residents looking for assistance, uh, which compares to about twenty-five calls per day throughout the previous fiscal year. Uh, in addition, at the same time, last year, we had provided uh, I think twenty-five households uh, with financial assistance, ESG, but this year, twenty-one. So even though that's a less number, um, when you take into account the inability that we have had to assist families with ESG homeless prevention funds because of the eviction moratorium, uh, which is obviously has been in place uh, since March, so since the beginning of this fiscal year anyway. It is cause for concern that there's, um, there's going to be pent-up demand for this type of help in the community. So and currently from um, our waitlist, I guess you want to call it, uh, we have about a hundred households um, in queue, uh, anticipating that the eviction moratorium will probably end in January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, if it's not extended again. So it is understood that some will be able to qualify for other funding sources like the ESG CARES Act. Um, but even taking into account uh, this extra funding source, that there's anticipated significant challenges, one being that many of the households um, that are looking for assistance have been behind on their rental payments for over nine months, and both funding sources um, limit the maximum amount that you can provide assistance for, assistance for arrears at six months. So um, we understand that these are very difficult challenges, but we feel prepared to deal with them uh, in partnership with other community organizations in the city of Fall River. In closing, I'll just say that over the years, you know, we have been honored to partner with FR CDA in carrying out their mission. And we hope that this relationship is going to continue and welcome the opportunity to receive um, ESG funding under the two thousand twenty-two RFF. Thank you.
Thanks, Rui. Uh, we're also grateful for the partnership that CDA has with CSS. Uh, you guys provide wonderful services to the, to the residents of the city, and we're thrilled uh, to be partnered with you. So thank you for your input tonight. It's greatly appreciated. Have a good one. And last but not least, the gentleman that waited all night, uh, Goth Patterson, representing uh, the CFC, Citizens for Citizens.
I don't know if this is a good thing, because now the pressure's off, but uh, yeah, everybody just got right off after I was done. You know, I'll read the statement in here, Mike, if you want. I can email this to, uh, you know, Erica in the morning. Um, and uh, maybe just have a few questions after I do read the statement. Um, my name is Goth Patterson. I'm the Executive Director of Citizens for Citizens Incorporated, located on two sixty-four Griffin Street in Fall River. CFC is the community action agency designated to service the greater Fall River and town area. CFC annually services more than forty thousand households through an array of programs from early education and childcare and Head Start, as well as after-school and extended childcare services to help working families retain employment without having to worry about childcare. Another one of our signature programs is Field Assistance, a Y-heat, which services fifteen thousand households each year. Other CFC programs include a senior workforce development program and several volunteer programs, such as the Foster Grandparent and Retired Senior Volunteer Program, as well as a volunteer income tax program. During this pandemic, our food pantry has seen, seen an increase in requests tripled from the onset of the governor's phased-in shutdown protocols. Over the past decade, CFC has administered a very modest rental assistance program funded entirely through the Emergency Food and Shelter Program, formerly known as FEMA, and funding has been made available. During the hour year, CFC partnered with Community Development and administered a homeless intervention program, which also provided rental assistance to prevent families from being evicted. CFC has received CSBG funding from the CARE stimulus package, through which we have earmarked three hundred thousand to administer a rental assistance program. However, with the number of individuals and families dealing with reduced income, we feel this will only help a few hundred um, households and much more is needed. We were very pleased to receive this grant information and to be provided the opportunity to submit a proposal to continue with much-needed rental assistance once our program funds are exhausted. We believe that the aftermath of the pandemic will be far worse than what people are currently dealing with, and we are hoping to be a small part of the financial recovery for our Fall River residents. I would like to thank Mayor Paul Coogan and Community Development Executive Director Mike Dion for the opportunity to provide comments today and allow me, CFC, to apply for this much-needed grant funding. As a community action agency for one of the Commonwealth's gateway cities, we feel an obligation to address this pandemic and the debilitating effects it is having on all our citizens, and in particular, those who are struggling to provide food and shelter for themselves and their families during these difficult times. So I want to thank you, Mike, very much. And I definitely want to, you know, thank your staff. Thank Erica and the mayor. Um, you know, we've, obviously, with the amount of people we're still seeing, you know, I was the field director for years, uh, the amount of families we see there, the amount of referrals we make, whenever we do have rental assistance money to a family, we go through it so quickly. You know, we're still seeing the same amount of people. So to date, for our field program, just from November first till now, we just did the stats for December for the state. We've already, um, you know, we've already had applications in for over ten thousand families, and we still have many months to go on the program. Um, you know, so we did make that serious commitment. You know, Liz Barrowby, of course, is the new executive director, taking the place of David Billcliff, retired. And that's a significant amount of our CARES funding is going to rental assistance, but we know three hundred thousand you can go through, you know, very quickly. So, you know, we're um, going to probably be submitting, you know, through the home funds or the ESG portion. Um, don't know if you might have some money of staff that we could reach out to just to talk about, you know, which proposal might be best fit for us. I did just notice that Catholic Social Services will be going for the same ESG funding that I think we're looking to go get ourselves. So you know, any kind of assistance like that, we, we certainly will have our application submitted by January twenty-seventh. Um, you know, but that would be helpful. Um, maybe Eric can just give me that information when I, when I send in the comments tomorrow. Um, you know, rental assistance, housing assistance, you know, I worked for Congressman Frank for twenty-three years. Of course, that was such a big part of what he did. And uh, Mike, you've certainly been uh, very helpful in, in that regard and through community development, that's for sure. So uh, we really appreciate the opportunity to do this and that you reached out and, and offered us this opportunity. So I just want to thank you for that. And uh, look forward to submitting these comments and uh, interacting with your office a little bit.
Yeah, Goth, I want to thank you too. Um, you know, we've had a great relationship with CFC throughout the years. Um, send us the, um, send us the comments tomorrow, and what we can do is, uh, you know, you, myself, and Erica, let's set up a Zoom meeting for uh, um, maybe Friday, if you're available, or early Monday, uh, early next week, Monday or Tuesday. And let's go over some ideas of what you're thinking of applying for and, and, you know, let's talk it out and stuff like that. We'll try to give you some direction. Um, you know, and, and I might have some CARES Act funding also that, um, um, I'm working on. Uh, so, um, you know, we're working with Eloise at your place for the learning pods and stuff, but um, there might be some also other available. So I, I think we should just get together, uh, run it through Erica. Let me know. My schedule's open on Friday in, in early next week. And let's just sit down and have a discussion. So I appreciate you spending time tonight, commenting. We're sorry you were last. I know you probably want to get home, but you know.
I know. I, I did enjoy, I did enjoy listening to everybody because I think, you know, we're all, it's all the same mission, you know, and uh, I really very much respect all the people that spoke before, and you know, we're all working together. We certainly refer to those programs ourselves, as I'm sure they refer back to us, you know, so it's, it's really working together and um, you know, so uh, the opportunity to interact that way. I really appreciate you, um, you know, making that offer because that's very helpful. You know, and, and we certainly appreciate, yeah, what you're doing for um, the funding with our early childcare program and, you know, the support over the years. So we definitely want to keep that relationship up and and uh, look forward to it. So I'll get back to Erica. I'll submit the, the comments, and then Erica, we can set up a Zoom time that's convenient for you, Mike. And uh, we really look forward to it, and Liz will want to be on that. So uh, really look forward to talking to you. Thank you very much, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Goth. Have a great night.
You too. Take care. Bye.
Have a good one.
You too.
That ends our public hearing for this evening. I want to thank everyone for tuning in, and I want to thank the, the people that took time to speak tonight. Um, uh, like I said in the, and at the beginning of the meeting, our, our two next dates that are very, very important is um, January twenty-seventh uh, of two thousand twenty-one is when um, we will require the request for funding forms to be submitted to our, uh, agency. Um, and the action plan, the summary of the proposed action plan will be posted on February twenty-sixth, uh, two thousand twenty-one in the Herald News. And we will have another public hearing on March tenth, two thousand twenty-one. And uh, if it's going to be a Zoom, we will send out in our advertisements um, how to go about getting onto the Zoom meeting. So again, thank you. I appreciate everything, and have a wonderful evening.